Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Brown. I'm the Chair of the Merrimack High School Activism and Civic Engagement Club, and I will be tonight's moderator for the 2023 Town Council Candidates Forum. With me are Katie Legay, who will be the Timekeeper, Sahari Ramirez, and Nathan De Fault, who will be my co-moderators. Before we begin, I'd like to thank Merrimack TV for filming tonight. As a reminder, you can view Merrimack TV on Xfinity Cable Channel 22, MerrimackTV.com, and streaming devices via the Cablecast Streamwave app on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. And if you'd like to re-watch this forum, that will be available tomorrow morning on the Merrimack TV YouTube channel. I'd also like to thank our advisor, Mrs. Beth Powers from Merrimack High School, and Merrimack Town Hall for allowing us to use the memorial room for tonight's debate. Without further ado, I'll introduce the candidates, starting with Charles LaFond, a 2020 and 2022 Town Council candidate; Mackenzie Murphy, a member of the School District Budget Committee; Finley Rothhouse, incumbent Town Counselor and Town Council Chair; David Trippett, who's an alternate member of the Town Conservation Commission; and Wolfram Von Schoen, who is a Merrimack Village District Commissioner. Without further ado, we'll start with opening statements. Candidates, you'll have 60 seconds, and we'll start with Mr. LaFond.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Charles LaFond. I live at Seven Linden Way, running for Town Council, and would appreciate your support and consideration. April 11th. Theme this year is quality, safety, and common sense. Those are the items I'm running on. I'm an Air Force veteran, was part of the 388th Tactical Fighter Wing at Hill Air Force Base Utah, first in the F-16. I served under General Creach and was part of the first all-volunteer military. I was also in the Reagan Administration's Rapid Deployment Force, first unit in. We settled here in 1983, thinking this beautiful little bedroom community would be a great place to raise our family. We absolutely did. It reminded us so much of our hometown down in Rhode Island. So we settled here in 1983, and we figured, what, five to eight years, we thought? Then we'd probably be moving on, moving out. Now I'm 40 years of residency. My, how time flies. I'm a Communication Systems Engineer with an MBA. I have an extensive and progressive experience in program, product, process, and personal management, quality management foundations in Belkor, ANSI, ISO, OSHA, EPA, Baldridge, Six Sigma, and other regulatory and standards bodies. So I already come pre-trained. Much of my previous experiences, I believe, will give me valuable skills helping serve this town in many capacities. I want you all to remember, April 11th, quality, safety, and common sense. Please elect Charles LaFond for Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Murphy. I've lived here in Merrimack all of my life. I'm 25 years old. I've been very involved in the town of Merrimack throughout my young years. This is my fifth year on the Merrimack School District Budget Committee. I'm also on the Ethics Committee, which I've been on for two years. I've also been very involved here in town as well as outside of town. I currently work at the lobster boat here in Merrimack. I've been involved in M.I.A. Sports. I danced at Broadway Bound Performing Arts Center here in Merrimack. I've done snack drives. I've done the snack drives for the hospital workers during the pandemic that my mom and I founded, where we worked with our town to get snacks for those working in the hospital during the pandemic. I've worked with the local Boy Scouts troop to do snack drives for that very cause, as well as our students in our school district. I have a proven track record of putting my heart into the people of this town. Outside of this town, I serve on the University System of New Hampshire Board of Trustees, on which I've been on for three years. And I also work at a local community college here in New Hampshire. I'm pursuing my master's in higher education and hopefully starting my EDD starting in August. So I'm running for Town Council because I want to serve the people of this town. I've lived here in Merrimack. I went to Merrimack schools. And again, I really hope to earn your vote and humbly ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Rothhouse.
Thank you. I would like to start with thanking Matthew Brown and the Merrimack High School Activism and Civic Engagement Club. I think it's wonderful. I think townspeople deserve the opportunity to hear from their candidates firsthand. My name's Finley Rothhouse, and I look forward to an opportunity to serve once again on the Merrimack Town Council. I moved to Merrimack in '71 when my dad retired from the Navy, brought our family here. I did go to Merrimack High School, graduated in 1975. Six months out of high school, I went into the Army for three years and spent most of that time in Central Europe. I got out of the Army and for a year and a half sold kids at camps and became self-employed, worked for myself ever since. In 1985, I got married to Lori Grubrich, the love of my life, and we've had three children. All three of those children currently own homes here in Merrimack, which is fortunate because two of those three children have seven grandchildren from my wife and I, and life is perfect. I was in the legislature. I got elected in November of '90 to be a state rep in the legislature. I did that from '91 to '95. From '95 to 2001, I sat on the Board of Selectmen. The next five years after that, I served on various boards, committees, and commissions. The highlight of those were likely the Charter Commission that came up with the form of governance we use in town today. And I served in the council from 2006 to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trippett.
Hi, my name's David Trippett, running for Town Council. I've lived here in town for about 40 years. During those 40 years, I started volunteering. Basically, when my children were small and sports, I'd go to the sports events and help out. After the sports events, I did the famous Camp My Tina trip, and that was an eye-opening adventure. Then after Camp My Tina, I did the Boy Scouts. I worked with Troop 15 and 401, and we took six of our eight kids to Eagle Scout. And after I did that, I said I need to do more, so I decided to be Assistant Town Moderator. I did that for about 10 years, working the elections. Then I said, I'm tired of seeing trash in the streets, so I adopted a couple of roads. We started picking up all the roads around town. Then I started wanting to do more, so I volunteered at the Sklar River Park Project. And I've been working down there, and it gave me opportunity to become a member of the Conservation Commission, which has brought me to new opportunities, and I really enjoy it. My education is I've got an MBA in business, I Six Sigma Green Belt certified, and have a holdout certification as a computer technician. I don't really practice it, but I wanted to know more about computers, so that's what I did. So I'm looking forward to just moving forward with the town and trying to do things to bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trippett. Mr. Von Schoen.
Thank you, Matthew. First of all, I want to thank the club as well. I really appreciate you guys organizing this, and I want to say, Matthew, I thought you were way older than you are because you just presented yourself and the club in really great terms. So thank you for organizing this, and thank you for everybody for coming out. My name is Wolfram Von Schoen. I live at 4 Conservation Drive here in Merrimack, of course, and I do ask also humbly for your vote on April 11th as one of the two new Town Councilor seats that need to be filled. Quick introduction, quick. I was born '74 in Stuttgart, Germany, as you can probably tell. I wish I could have your pronunciation too, by the way. And studied automation engineering and micro systems at the University of Stuttgart in a small college, then also in the Black Forest and Fortheim. I came to the U.S. in 2000 and basically wrote my thesis at the time and met my wife in Pennsylvania. And, well, future wife at that time, obviously. And married in 2002, lived in Pennsylvania for eight years, lived in Switzerland for two years, and then 2014 moved to New Hampshire and January 2015 to Merrimack. Bought a house here and never left and don't intend to. I became naturalized, just so that's clear, as a U.S. citizen in 2012. So yes, I am absolutely eligible for this office. And basically worked since the early '90s in small and large corporations, smaller business, large corporations, as project manager, business consultant, as vice president in various roles, managing director in the automotive industry for one, but also in warehouse automation and robotics, and also in software and cybersecurity industries. Currently, I'm actually self-employed. Started a new business here in January, go out on my own. And as hobbies, I just enjoy spending time with the family, enjoying the outdoors, motorcycle riding, skiing, and different things. And the reason why I'm really running for Town Council is just because I enjoy working for the community. Merrimack is the first time in my life that I actually do engage in community service, and it's getting better every year that I'm doing this, and I want to keep doing it.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. We'll move on to our first question, and I failed to mention this earlier. When you have 10 seconds, I'll be lenient when you go over, but when you have 10 seconds, I'll just tap the pen like that. So your first question is, why are you running for Town Council? And we'll start again with Mr. LaFond.
Hi. The way I see it, we depend on the town to provide us with safe roads and services. A definite plus in this town course of all our trails, our athletic fields, and our parks, these make Merrimack a value treasure. Our old shops, the outlets, the movies, the restaurants, there's so much to see and do, all within the town. I believe our town employees are also a treasure. It is nice to see familiar faces behind the desks, regular service that we get. But the past year, I noticed there was a big effort to trim some branches along the road. I applaud that. I thought we hadn't done it for a few years. I brought that complaint up a couple of times. But if you notice, the way they trimmed the branches was the way they always did it. We had 100-foot pine trees. They took out all the branches just above them. Just above them. Took out all the branches just below them. Needless to say, when the heavy wet snow came and froze, it tumbled down and created a catastrophic failure in town. These practices sometimes do not serve well. I think we really had two snowstorms, and both had catastrophic effects. We need to get the tall trees away from our main roads. I believe it's a matter of time before our next catastrophe, just like our last. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
I am running for Town Council as I want to make Merrimack a place where young families want to live, where our elderly are not taxed out of their homes, and where our young families also want to raise a family. We've seen a lot of growth in our town, and we need to control that growth. I think that we need the infrastructure in order to support that growth, and we need to do what's best for the people of our town. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, I want to serve the people of this town, and I want to do what's right. And I know if I'm elected to the Town Council, it will be a learning curve, and I'm more than happy to go in and do that research and make this town a town where people want to live and can afford to live in our town. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rothhouse.
Thank you, Matt. I'm running for Town Council because I believe I have the experience and knowledge necessary to support the continued growth and infrastructure needs that we're experiencing in town. As a Town Council, we always have annual goals meetings with our Town Manager so that the Council and the Town Manager are aware of the challenges that are to be faced. And we've been willing to measure our progress towards successfully meeting those goals. We've been results-driven board. As a Town Council, I've always been willing to listen and be aware of the needs and perspectives of the community. I know it's a necessity to continually prioritize the needs of the town while being aware of the tax burden our citizens and businesses face. I believe that the budgeting for the town has been extremely, basically responsible. And though I am a little concerned of the upcoming couple of years because of the inflationary pressures that we've been witnessing, I think that things are in good hands and moving forward nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Trippett.
Okay, so I want to run for Town Council because I see a lot of different things in town that I think can be brought forward or improved upon. Talked to a lot of residents. One of the big things in town is sidewalks. So I mentioned sidewalks, but everybody says we can't do sidewalks, can't do sidewalks. But I want to be that person that says, you know, we can do sidewalks. We can look down the road somehow. We can put some funding aside, and we can prioritize small areas and stop putting sidewalks in. I also like the recreation areas we have in town. I think we've done an awesome job with that through the Conservation Committee, purchasing properties. Some of the properties need to be worked on a little bit more, things like that. As Finley mentioned, we're going to be running into, I think, a big tax increase coming up in town. I think labor needs to be addressed. I think we've lost a lot of people in town, some monetary and some because of, I'd say, managerial differences. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Von Schoen.
Thank you. Why I'm running for Town Council is, in my book, the Town Council of the last couple of years that I lived in town has done a marvelous job, not only the standing, sitting members right now, but before as well. And I really want to continue on that path. I do not want to come here and push for dramatic change because I really don't see the need for it necessarily at all. I think there are some changes that can be done that I'll get to later, a little bit as far as like, you know, department growth here in town and some other impacts that the town is experiencing. But in general, I think there's good reason to continue the path that we're on. I do have, over the years, developed a great working relationship with many people here in town and, you know, Town Council, Town Administration, DPW, police, and so on. I have failed to mention that I'm also on the board of the Merrimack Rotary Club and organized that Electronic Recycling event now, the 30 years here. And in that path and other roles, I have just developed a great working relationships with people in town that the Town Council is interacting heavily with. So, and I want to support them in the end. The last one that I really want to contribute is clean water, right? I've been sitting on the MVD board now for five years in my second term. And in the role of MVD, I did not have an opportunity to help people that are private well owners. There's not much that MVD can do, excuse me, in that regard. And on the Town Council, I can at least attempt to work with the Town Government and, you know, with the Town Departments to continue pushing for restitution with the polluters in town and getting those people help that may not have received help yet.
Thank you, Mr. Von Schoen. In between the next question, I'd like to ask, if you could please silence your phones, that'd be great. Our next question is, what is your vision for Merrimack? And this time, we'll start with Mr. Von Schoen.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that leads right into what I mentioned earlier. We all know that Merrimack is experiencing growth at a rate that we, some of us wish we didn't, right? It's going pretty fast, maybe faster than we all like. And as a commissioner at MVD, I have actually motioned for some changes in the rate structure and in the system development charge calculation and in the permitting of new build-outs here in town. And those changes that MVD has adapted, that allow MVD to put a little bit of pressure on, you know, how far the usage goes with a property, with a given property. It's making it a little bit more, you know, it's helping to, either for these developers and builders to buy their fair share into the existing and future infrastructure, or it may even sway their opinion a little bit in terms of deutilization of that property. And I do think there's a little bit more that we can do in town there yet as far as some of those policies and rate structures that help maybe curb some of that growth. On the other hand, I also have to say that I believe that growth that the town has experienced has led to new entertainment, right? When you look at 360 on Tennyresta Highway, it's nice, right, what happened there? And it wouldn't have happened if we wouldn't see that growth. So one of the things that I believe as a Town Council that we should aspire to is to continue supporting whatever additional entertainment and attraction that the town has developed because of that growth, because it keeps us competitive with surrounding towns.
Thank you. Mr. Trippett.
Question again, please.
What is your vision for Merrimack?
My vision for Merrimack is to keep it growing as necessary, but maybe try to calm down a little on the apartment buildings. Getting a lot of apartment buildings in town, which is crowding a lot of the areas. With that being said, we need to increase the green spacey areas to sort of offset the congestion of town. We're talking about maybe putting a reconstructed intersection down the road a little bit, but to me, that's just going to put another light next to another light, next to another light. We already have gridlock in town as it is now between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. So I think if we try to streamline things like that, not keep putting impediments in the way of, you know, the flow of traffic, it would be a little bit better. But I see Merrimack as, it's just, it's big. It develops a lot of people, a lot of property. And I just want to see that keep going forward, but I'm also concerned about the tax rate. And if the tax rate keeps going up, people may end up leaving. So I'm concerned about that also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trippett. Councilman Rothhouse.
My vision for the town is kind of a continuation of what we've had. As a counselor representative to the Town Center Committee, and that's a committee that's been around for a good, I'd say, 15, 18 years, I should know. But, and that is their focus. We have not really had a town center, and they've tried to gradually develop one. And I think it is gradually coming around to that. Part of that town center, in my vision, is a safety complex. Our police and fire departments have really outgrown their facilities. They're antiquated. And we've now started gradually looking into it, looking for parcels of land that could be utilized for a purpose like that. And so that's, I'm envisioning the next couple of years that coming, being brought forward so people can have a look at what it's all about and see if we can get that support.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
So my vision for Merrimack, as I've mentioned before, would be that we work with our state so that that turnpike expansion does not hurt our town, to hold the polluters accountable. I'm sure you've all heard about the PFAS issue in our town. Three out of my six family members all have health issues that are related to PFAS exposure. We need to hold the polluters accountable. We need to ensure well owners have a say in state and town decisions being made in that regard. We're all talking about growth, smart growth proposals. We need to make sure that it's adding to the quality of our town and does not take away from our town. So that is one issue that I feel is very important. It has an effect on, it has an effect on our schools, and it has an effect on our towns. So we need to make sure we have smart growth proposals in our town. So overall, that would be my vision for Merrimack, again, making the town a place where young families and the elderly are not taxed out of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond.
Hi, thank you. I guess my vision for Merrimack, I have, it's broken into two pieces, a short and a long vision. In the short vision, I'd like to clean up the corners. I'd like to knock down all the berms. I'd like to get the trees out of the way. I can tell you every couple of years that when I'm out campaigning, let's say, I'm walking down the street, I'm finding I can't even walk down the street. The trees and bushes are pushing me into the street. People are honking their horns at me. And I mean, it should be walkable, and that's over by the Thornton's Ferry District, let alone down here in the center of town. And then when I walk over the bridge, it's literally in pieces. I got steel plates temporarily put up. I got this prison fence run down along the river. I know that was a great idea in its time, but really, I really think, short term, my vision is we clean up the middle of town. I'd like to see a really nice bridge with maybe like pole columns with lights and, you know what they have in most New England towns. And that'd be the center of our town. And I know from there, I'd like to fix up Watson Park. I think, maybe even with some of the center-of-town stuff, we might even be looking at a road going down there. I would love to see like little frozen ice stands and ice cream shops and stuff like that in the summertime, a little river walk. Merrimack's version of a river walk, right down there, right along, right along the brook in the Merrimack River. I don't, but that's my vision.
Thank you. Our next question is, how do you plan to work through differences with other council members? And this time, we'll start with Mr. LaFond.
Thank you. I like to say that I already sort of know how the council works. I don't know the various intricacies of the internals. But the thing that makes the council work is the fact that everybody talks to each other. They collaborate. They bounce their ideas off each other, so when they get to the town meeting, it's not something else. It's usually a pretty organized fashion. I have to say, you guys do a pretty good job at that. I have a problem with some of the priorities. There are things in town that can be done that will cost very little money. It would just take a little effort and putting people on it. That's where I sort of differ from others. I try to look for the low-hanging fruit and try to take advantage of those things and make the world a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy.
Well, I'd like to start out and acknowledge the work that the Town Council has done thus far. They've really done great work for our town. And again, I hope to earn your support and join that Town Council, but, you know, this is a nonpartisan position, and we're here to represent the people of this town. We're not going to agree on everything, and that's okay. I think, as long as we pay attention to you all as voters, that's what we're here for. We want to hear your concerns on all of this, and we want to represent you. So I think talking amongst ourselves on the Town Council, making sure we meet, making sure we hold town halls even with you all to talk about the work that we're doing, I think that's how we're going to work together as a team in order to get the work done.
Thank you, Mr. Rothhouse.
Thank you, Matt. The council's been fortunate that we kind of hold together with a core set of values based on respect, trust, integrity, and responsibility to the community. I've actually worked for a couple of different personalities that were from extremes, from the sweetest person in the world, Jackie Flood, to others who aren't so sweet, and were in fact kind of bullies. We don't tolerate that as a council. As Charles has alluded to, we do work together. And a vote is taken, no matter what that vote is, we live by that vote. We don't fight against each other over at future meetings, trying to change things. It's, we just appreciate everything that each of us put into it. And that's, so I can work with anybody.
Thank you. Mr. Trippett.
Conflict resolution. It's a hard topic. Not everybody agrees about everything all the time. I mean, I have my opinions. Fellas here have their own opinions. Each opinion's important, but when it comes down to the basic thing is we've got seven people on the board. You have four people that want to do it one way, that's how it's going to be. Not everybody's going to be happy all the time, but that's how it has to be. We need to go with the majority of the people and how they want to vote. So my idea of conflict resolution is to go with the majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Von Schoen.
Thank you. Differences are good a lot of times, right? They only become a problem if egos and emotions get into their way, right? So, and as David Trippett here just alluded to, thankfully, we have tools to deal with that by, you know, using Robert's Rule of Law, Rule of Order, by following the RSAs, by following the bylaws of the town. And as he said, we don't all need to agree to be productive as a board, right? We can't have differences of opinions. We just have to have that majority on the board to stay productive. Where it becomes a problem is when people are leaving the room and then continue that discussion outside of the room and torpedoing the coherence of the meeting that just happened and the decision that has been made and bringing the egos and emotions into the discussion. And that cannot happen. That has to stay in front of the board. It has to stay in front of the team, and it has to end at the time the decision is being made and recorded.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move into a quick lightning round. You'll have 10 seconds to respond to each question. They should be pretty easy, and our first question will come from co-moderator Nathan De Fault.
What is your favorite Merrimack restaurant?
We'll start with Mr. LaFond.
Oh, that's a tough one because I love them all. It's a tie, really. I had to think about this. It's a tie. The Common Man and Tortilla Flats.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Oh, man, it all depends on what type of mood I'm in, but I would say I really love the Portofino Restaurant. That's probably one of my favorites.
Thank you, Mr. Rothhouse.
The toughest of all questions. My wife and I spend way too much time at all the restaurants in town, but if I had to go out for the first one, the best one, it would be my DW Diner because they embrace my grandchildren like they were their own. And people who know me know I've been there for 20 years now, so.
Mr. Trippett.
I love Charlie's. Go to Charlie's for breakfast. Dinner, go to the Homestead. There I am, Charlie's and the Homestead.
Mr. Von Schoen.
I'm going to take the diplomatic route out and going to say I love eating at my wife's own restaurant at home. It's great and good.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Sahari Ramirez.
How long have you lived in Merrimack?
Mr. Von Schoen.
Since January 2015.
Mr. Trippett.
Almost 40 years.
Mr. Rothhouse.
52 years.
Ms. Murphy.
All 25 years of my life.
Mr. LaFond.
40 years.
Okay. And then our last writing loud question will come from Nathan De Fault.
What is your favorite Merrimack park?
Mr. LaFond.
Oh, again, a tough one. It's a cross between Wasserman and veterans. I have so many memories of veterans where all the Pop Warner games are.
Ms. Murphy.
I would say the Abbey Griffin Park, especially over the summer with all of the events that they have.
And I would concur. Abbey Griffin Park because of the woman it represents. It was amazing for the town.
True, true. Sklar Park.
Greater Woods. It's huge. It's amazing. It offers anything that anybody can ever wish for as far as the outdoors, and it's right behind my house. So.
Now we'll move into questions from the audience. We're going to start with, explain the job of the Town Council, what they do and what they do not. For this, we're going to start with Mr. Von Schoen.
Okay, it's loaded. So I'm going to answer that a little bit the other way around. You have a lot of committees in town that actually conduct a lot of business. The Town Council does not conduct those committees' business, so I answer that route. And then, of course, we start primarily with the budget process for the town and the budget approval, going through the various departments, analyzing their needs and... approval, going through the various departments, analyzing their needs and supporting it or denying it as needed and balancing that with the taxpayers' willingness and ability to come up with the funds for that.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Trippett.
I look at the town council as having a 100-foot view of everything. Sit back and look at everything, lay things out. As Wolfie said, you know, the committees do a lot of the things. Town council sort of steers the ship where it's going. So that's the object. It's to have the thought process moving forward and to steer the ship going that way.
We're going to go to Mr. LaFond now.
Could you ask the question again, please?
Yeah. Explain the job of the town council, what they do and what they do not do.
Right. So basically, the town council, as I see it, they adjust our town code to meet the current situations. Sometimes new things start to arise, new devices arise, new conditions arise. They also go in and set town policy, town budget items. They approve them, they grant them. They do not go off on chases. They do not, should I say, activate certain things. As Wolfram said, items should be coming up through the committees to the town hall. It's only if something bad happens that it should go at the town hall. And I have to say this, is that if you're just waiting for something bad to happen to manage it, you're basically doing some sort of failure management or management by failure. I'd rather be proactive and be in front of situations.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
I would say the role of our town council is obviously to make Merrimack a place, a good place to live, that we control the growth in our town, that they work with the police and the fire department, that they work with the MVD, they work with the planning and building committee, they work with all different aspects of our town, our roads and our bridges to make Merrimack, again, a good, a good place to live for everyone in this town, that they create a budget that's based on our taxpayers, that we are not raising our taxes in our town. And I think it's important, again, that they take, they take into consideration your thoughts and ideas in order to do the work that that needs to get done for our town.
Thank you, Councilman Rothaus.
Well, I'd have been touched on, the town council is responsible for setting policy and those types of things. We do the budgeting and so on, both short term and long term through capital reserve funding, anticipating projects down the road and so on. What we don't do, that a lot of people don't know, is we don't have control over the town employees in a direct fashion. Our control, the two people that we deal with, one, we definitely deal with is the town managers, the person we hire and fire, and I believe the assessors as well, but I've had a debate about that with former town managers. So, but I believe those are the only two employees that the council deals with.
Thank you. Our next question is, have you considered a food waste program implementation at the transfer station for composting? And we'll start with Ms. Murphy.
That's not something I myself have thought about yet. I think that that would be a great idea. I think the more, the more that we can do that, it will create a healthy environment for our town and it'll make our town a safe, a safe place to live.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond.
I think that would be a good idea. I've seen them doing some can collection over by the recycle building at times. I'd really probably like to see it done more toward the schools or some other area where it could actually be gotten. I know I've seen it when you walk out of Shaw's. And I think that's probably where it has the best impact because oftentimes the holidays are, that's when I think of it. And you're walking through, you know, it's, it's nothing to just grab some extra cans or something, some extra food that you like, put it in the container.
Thank you, Mr. Rothaus.
I actually hadn't even contemplated that, but it's, we'd have to make sure that it's hard to say, but as an effect, interfere with town operations, it's a lot of, you know, things that might have an impact, might be impacted by process, but something that would be interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Trippett.
When you say food waste, could you define that for me, please?
I didn't write the question.
Okay. I'm wondering if it's table scraps or it's leftover food from restaurants or if it's canned items we're gathering for people in need. So at our house, we personally, we have a composting pile out in the woods that we use and we use that to go back in the garden. If that's the thing you're talking about, you know, I think in a big, wide town project, that'd be kind of hard to implement.
Thank you, Mr. Von Schon.
I shared Dave's confusion. I'm not 100% sure what we're looking at here. If it's like a food collection, you know, for the needy program. Personally, I think that's rather something that I would propose to, say, for example, the Rotary Club that I participate in. I'm not sure if I see that as a town function personally. Certainly something that we can look at, but personally, I think there's probably better ways to spend taxpayer money than that and have volunteer organizations cover that.
Thank you. And our last audience question is, what ideas do you have to reduce fossil fuel usage in the town? And we'll start with Mr. Von Schon.
Well, this is again a loaded question. I grew up in Europe, right? And public transportation in Europe is obviously a lot more, you know, common than it is usually in the States and partially because of the concentration of people over an area land, right? And the US is much more sprawled out than Europe usually is. I'm not sure if I would address that on a town council level personally, but I could see that, and this is again with a caveat or with a little bit of a side note, that's where sidewalks could come into play, right? The more sidewalks we have that are safe and protective of pedestrians and people on bicycles, the more people are going to be motivated to hit Shaw's or town hall or whatnot or their friend's house on the bicycle, right? I'm not necessarily advertising for or advocating for sidewalks because I know the taxpayers' impact, but it's certainly something I would want to look at and look at the numbers before I make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Trippett.
Well, I would go with Wolf's saying there, but I'd also look at maybe the police department, fire department, places like that, see if we can convert over to electric vehicles. I know other police departments have converted over to those. We can look at the town using, you know, gas powered tools and swap over to battery operated tools. So there's little ways like that that you can do things, but as a huge scale, I'm not quite sure about like hydro power or wind power in town.
Mr. Rothaus.
I think when the town does new development, we built a highway garage a few years ago. We did look into the greening of it as much as possible. In order for that to really work, because we have to be cognizant of the impact of the tax rate and so on, it has, it's typically substantially covered by grants and, you know, special programs. And that's how I would see that possibly happening. I think when it comes to greening of our economy, it really is going to be focused on at the federal level. It's, it's got to be a trickle down and it's got to be affordable for people. And so that's, you know, in our, if we do any new construction, we'll always look at that because it is beneficial. If it is, we'll definitely do it.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond.
As far as reducing fossil fuels, I don't know if I could be that specific, but as far as carbon offsets, the one area I would look at is possibly putting solar and wind at the schools, on the police station, at the town hall. I would do it everywhere, but I put this caveat in, is that that technology is not quite finished. But I believe that if you had that square footage covered with solar panels, we would have our own self-generating electricity right in that area. They would produce more than enough electricity for that complex and provide enough electricity for the surrounding area. Of course, it costs batteries, solar panels. Technology is coming, but I can definitely see us doing something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
I would have to agree with, with having more, more of the electric vehicles as well as the solar panels. I think this, this is a decision that I would want to talk with our town council more about and talk, talk with members of the town, talk with members of our town boards, work with our state delegation as well as the federal delegation to make that happen. So I think it would take a little, need to take a little more research in order to actually come up with a reasonable decision as to how to reduce the fossil fuels in our town.
Thank you. Now we're going to begin closing statements, starting with 2020 and 2022 Town Council candidate, Charles LaFond.
I thank you. And I hope I've been able to communicate the things that make me different from the other candidates. Again, the theme of my campaign this year is quality, safety and common sense. I want to thank Matthew Braun and you all for putting this on. This is beyond my wildest expectations. I'm looking for your support on April 11th. I know I'm new, sort of, to the town government. I've run before and I know that I could bring positive change. Two areas that I've worked on in civilian life have been predictive maintenance where we eliminate any catastrophes and trust we've done it before, we can do it again. And the other area that I would like to say that I'd like to work on is being able to mind our gaps, where the differences are, where issues are, being able to remember those and work through those and concentrate on those things first.
Thank you. Now, Town Ethics Committee member and School District Budget Committee member, Mackenzie Murphy.
Thank you so much, Matthew, and to your club for taking the time to put this event on. It's really wonderful as a young person to see other young people involved. So I hope that you stay involved in this process. So as, as a young person, I think I bring a lot of experience. I think I bring a proven track record of all, of volunteerism to my role in being able to run for the town council. I want to make Merrimack a place where all want to live and work and raise a family. I think, you know, we all come from diverse backgrounds and I think that's important. I think we need to work together in order to, again, make Merrimack a place where people want to live and stay. We've seen, again, a lot of growth in Merrimack. We need to come up with a plan in order to control that growth. There's, I think, a lot, a lot that we can do through my experience on statewide boards, on town committees. I think I've proven that I can work with other people. We've been successful on the statewide committees and town boards that I've been on. And I think that I can bring that same experience to our town council in Merrimack.
Thank you. Town Councilman and Town Council Chair, Finley Rothaus.
Thank you, Matthew. And again, like everybody, I'm very impressed and I'm thankful that you and the club have put this together. It's very beneficial to the town. I think leadership is about action. It's not a position. And I think that as a community, you know, we've said things in a pretty good way over the years. It's, it's a lot of problem solving goes on and trying to maybe walk through these, the budgets and so on. And I think I bring that experience to the table and would appreciate that support on April 11th.
Thank you. Alternate member of the Town Conservation Commission, David Trippett.
Well, once again, thank you all for coming here and putting this on. I, I would like to be part of the town council because I want to bring a different vision to it. I think differently than some people, but collectively, we all want the same thing. We want the town to be better and to grow and just be more homogenistic. I want the town to be more user friendly. I want people to have a picnic. I want, you know, the Fourth of July celebration to go on. I want to have a fall celebration. I love the winter carnival we have. I think we need to do more things as a town. It seems that we're getting so big, we're being pulled apart and we're losing the connection of townness. And so what I try to do as a town council is try to develop programs or something to pull people together so we can, once again, you know, we're all town people, but sit there in the green and have a picnic or something. That's what I'd like. It's a town to come back to be more of a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Merrimack Village District Commissioner, Wolfram Von Schon.
Thank you, Matt. I got to say you guys have a lot of courage, you know, presenting here and directing some old guy, except for one person. You have a lot of courage. So, so thank you very much for doing this one more time. When I, when I ran for MVD, I had no idea how town administration politics and so on work. And I do want to put a shout out there for the, you know, for the citizens of Clean Water. I wouldn't be sitting here applying for this job, for this, for this office, if they wouldn't have, you know, pulled, not reamed, pulled me into this whole town government thing six, seven years ago and five years ago, God helped me, you know, run for this office at MVD. When I ran for MVD, I ran for MVD because I did not feel that, you know, enough was done for the PFAS pollution, frankly. Looking back now, what I know now, that's maybe only half the truth, but be that as it may. And I just learned a lot over the years how this, how this works. And I ran for MVD office because I promised transparency. I promised accessibility. I promised people, you know, to be able to come to me and talk to me. And I feel like I can claim that I delivered on that in the last five years. I'm probably one of the most engaged commissioners out there, except for maybe one more, another chair, you know, to offer people to answer questions and, and give them clarity about what's really happening and why is it happening? And, you know, brief people on the realities of the situation. And, and I do commit to do the same thing as a town councillor. I recognize it's probably going to be a little bit harder because the town council is probably a little bit stiffer in following Robert's rule of law and than MVD sometimes is. But, you know, I obviously have to be very careful that I don't speak for the board. I speak as a member of the board, right, obviously. But in the end, when you look at the last five years with my involvement, MVD has delivered on every project on budget, on time, aside from the COVID supply chain issues, you know, all the plants and filtration plants and so on, and infrastructure projects that went out, they all came in on time and on budget. And I, I believe that's partially because of the experience that I personally contributed to the table. I have almost 25 years, 30 years now of industrial experience and leadership experience, of budgeting experience and project experience in construction and automation and whatnot. And I believe I can help the town council a little bit with that as well.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close. I want to thank everyone here today, everyone who's helping, the audience. I mean, the town doesn't work without people, people who are interested, people who vote. A reminder that the election is on April 11th. And yeah, this is important that we all do our best to vote and get involved with the community. Thank you all for coming.